Yeah, my sister, what's wrong with this? Oh, God. Hi, welcome everyone, it is six thirty. I will call at July seventh to confirm the order. This is John Neat for the public.
The United States of America, and to the Father of our rich and sound, one nation under God, and in his law, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Reed.
Here.
Councilman Lippin.
Yes.
Councilman Ling.
Here.
And Councilman Meyer.
Here.
For Councilman President, Councilman Matt is absent. Also present is Attorney Attorney Kent Zantman, Senator Benner, Senator Stacey. Um, I have three approval of general there is some additions. Uh, we'll do ten A, will be resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-two-five. And on the miscellaneous business, we'll just speak both of these sides. We have an agenda.
All the promotions that goes the agenda?
Second. Motion by Councilman Lippin, second by Councilman Ling, approve the agenda. Home affairs say aye?
Aye.
opposed? And four sits, interesting the councils, everyone's like the best combo that's not uh about other topic other than the public hearing. Say none, we'll move on to the public hearing. I do need a motion to close the regular meeting and open the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the regular hearing, open the public, regular meeting and open the public hearing.
Motion by Councilman Meyer, second by Councilman Ling, the uh, hold the regular meeting and open the public hearing. Home affairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed, open the public hearing. Justice and insult.
I'll just read um, the theory that should explain the project and the development agreement. So, So Cozy Properties LLC plans to construct a new commercial facility on the development property located at four oh nine five zero State Highway five, Arlington. This new facility is projected to increase total value to a minimum of one million four hundred eighty-nine thousand and employ a minimum of ten full-time equipment employees. The city's EDA is proposing to sell the property to So Cozy Properties for a sum of one dollar. This is a direct financial incentive to support the project, which both the city of Arlington and Sibley County are all proposing tax abatement assistance to developers. This abatement will apply to the increase in property taxes generated by the new development, not the existing tax base. The city's abatement will not exceed eighteen thousand six hundred eighty-six dollars per year for a total of two hundred seventy-nine thousand five hundred forty-six dollars over a period of fifteen years. So Cozy Properties LLC has represented that the tax payment is essential to offset the construction cost of the facility. The agreement acknowledges the developer's request for exemption from connecting the city sewer and water due to the financial burden of extending both systems to this specific location. The agreement stipulates that the developer isn't required to connect the city sewer and water for a period of twenty-five years. There is also a first right to purchase that saves if the property is subdivided and not utilized, you can intend to develop it, and subdivided portion will be subject to a first right to purchase and can be pulled back to the EDA for one dollar. This agreement is also safe for twenty-five years. This agreement outlines benefits to the community, including job creation, uh, again, the time full-time equivalent, increased tax base after the abatement period, uh, the construction of the one point eight, one point four eight nine million dollar facility will ultimately increase the overall tax base of both the city and Sibley County, uh, once the abatement period is over. This will promote economic growth and tourism. The project is expected to promote tourism to Arlington and Sibley County, being to increase use of service and additional businesses for other local establishments. Um, also called the purpose of the EDA and the city council act, determines that assisting this project is in the public interest by promoting job creation retention and overall business role while making the project economically feasible for the developer. Um, it's also important to understand that this assistance comes with strict requirements of state cards for the city and the county. There is a construction timeline, the developer must begin construction within a hundred and eighty days of receiving the deed to the property and complete the listing by June versus twenty-two-seven. The minimum investment of the completed facility must deck a minimal value of the one million four hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, the developer must continuously employ at least ten full-time equal positions for the duration of the subsidy in the agreement. The developer must comply with all Arlington city ordinances, with those state statutes, building codes, and gain all necessary permits. They must also remain current on all real estate taxes and other government positions. So Cozy Properties LLC is also required to provide annual proof of achieving and maintaining the operating requirements to the EDA. Failure to do so is for a penalty and it means the default of the agreement. The agreement also includes clear default provisions that the developer fails to meet their obligations, uh, if the city's EDA have remedies available, including potential callbacks.
Okay. Does anyone would like to voice opinion? Saying none?
Yeah, um, and then we don't have anything on the agenda for additional information?
Oh.
Sure, I look forward to that. I thought that maybe more people were up to. Uh, my name is Christian Lilienthal, I'm a civilty commission. Home affairs. Yep. Thank you. Um, my name is Christian Lilienthal, I'm a civilty commission. Uh, I'm just excited to come to last week's EDA meeting and learn a little bit more about the project. I've been trying to, um, make sure, work out a little bit of research, um, talked to the applicants a little bit ago, on what they're intending to do, and some of the struggles we're getting there, and how the county can help out with the raise also. Um, we have not received, um, this many of our agendas yet, our first chance, uh, to review will be at public hearing at the end of the month. Um, but I was lecturing, you know, some comments back from this meeting, um, to help encourage it through the process. I've been working with the city administrator a little bit on, um, on a, on a idea, idea than getting through. Um, I, I think tax abatement is an option. I don't know that it's, um, my favorite option right now. I know that there's, um, this is kind of the bread and butter type of project for federal EDA to get infrastructure out there. And I think, you know what, Jess and I can meet with, um, Darren Cleer, the, um, the area representative, and I think there might be a good chance of getting utilities out there, if that's still an option from the city's perspective. Um, but if we're collecting, I think we'd probably try pursuing something like that to make better use of the additional outlots, some of the non-development land in between, and better future growth rather than the isolated, um, water septic for this property that really wouldn't benefit adjacent users, um, really doesn't encourage further growth. Um, I think if, if county and the city are giving out, um, incentives, it is always nice, you know, for the, for the general public to understand how, how it can lead to more things. And so, um, I'm gonna try to, yeah, try to work with that a little bit. Um, at, at the end of the month, I have somebody who's willing to, uh, prepare the application for federal EDA on behalf of the applicants in the city, if there's interest. Um, they say that it's not even a competitive process. Eighty percent should be very cheap, we'll pay more, since Arlington is in a disaster zone right now. Um, I don't know how that would affect, you know, I know, I know the cost of putting in the septic and, uh, the well are a large part of this tax statement, I don't know how that would affect this request, um, but at least, at least this process is already rolling, is something we're telling. I know there's been good diligence on the conversation of tip too, and still haven't given up on tip, I think that's exactly the tool in the toolbox, maybe working through a couple of the options might. Again, uh, very excited to see it, I feel like this is kind of a project I've been waiting for, and, uh, realized to find a way to pull in some other players for it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Uh, I can just kind of chime in, I know that the, so Jess had started, uh, we don't really have anything on the agenda for approval yet at this point from the city council. So the EDA, they held their public hearings, that was last week, right? And so we were just waiting on that first right to purchase to be put together, uh, for them to consider, that has been completed now. Um, and then the hope is that we can get everything agreed upon at the EDA here soon, at their next meeting, or maybe soon there.
Sooner.
Um, and then once they have agreed to the transfer of this, I guess, the property to So Cozy, I think then it's gonna be ripe for the council to then take action. At this point, yeah, the, the property still is with the EDA, and the EDA is working through their stuff on their end, their subsidy of giving that property for the subsidy price of a dollar. And they're part of this development agreement that's been included. So a lot of this was hand in hand, as well as with the county, so a lot of moving parts here, just trying to get it all coordinated, but we're moving in the right direction here.
Okay, do you know, as Christian said, that there would be some money available for EDA after the state deed, or federal deed, does that interfere with the city's, city and all, or we cap on the subject?
Well, that was, that was what I was wondering too, is, you know, exploring that option, would it all slow this down, or if we could continue, and maybe that's something we need to look into, because I know, um, some of the EDAs, um, some of their policies do cap, but I don't know if that includes the tax payment and all, all that kind of thing, and if it's a grant, I wouldn't imagine that, but.
I mean, I don't know what the specifics are on the grant, I guess the first I've heard of it is tonight, uh, and I don't know what the specifics on these terms of the grants are. Um, and I know it was brought up just this evening about the TIP, uh, and I know that Jess had spoken with Shannon, so he needs a financial advisor for the city, and he has some concerns about going that route, uh, so the maximum term on that would be nine years rather than fifteen years, which we're looking at with the tax abatement, as well as there's gonna be some pretty substantial upfront costs for the city, um, repairs the TIP districts, the, all of the requirements that go along with it, the bonding council that's gonna go along with it, and the supporting requirement. But it's, it's a lot more hand-on, a lot more substantial costs that are gonna go along with the TIP, so whether or not that's advisable, Shannon, we didn't think so, I guess, we haven't had all that much time to look into it.
Is TIP only on city tax dollars, or does the county have to create a tax district on behalf of them, so?
Well, I believe that can be both, um.
You want me to answer that?
Well, I think the biggest difference, correct me if I do, from the TIP to the jurisdiction for city, county, and school, where our tax abatement, correct?
It is, it's basically the cost to cure a site. If there's no land and property, if there's no utilities there, that would be things like their pond, their access from the road, the sewer and water, and, um, it's actually passive from the county and the school districts, they have you, we'll be deciding it for us. Um, and, um, there are different, different types of TIPs, they have to qualify in certain ways, each with different terms of service. Um, we've gotten one through in the city of the other recently that I believe is nearly thirty years, um, that was kind of a buck four pause, but a lot of times it's, um, it's curing something on the property, and I think that the utilities and infrastructure is, is exactly what it was created for. But that would come plan B to EDA, supporting eighty percent of most of the cost through the city.
Yeah, because I didn't, you know, anything we can do, I, when, when we start this process, I, excuse me, I mentioned, you know, that I'm a hundred percent in favor, I just wanted to be totally, uh, upfront and transparent, you know, that city's, uh, tax abatement portion of this would be about two hundred and seventy-nine thousand roughly, it'll be more than that over fifteen years, plus the property, I think, which was ten acres or more, which at today's value is anywhere between, uh, I know, New Orleans just trying to buy some land there, I'm just twelve thousand range, let's just say eight thousand dollars acres, so we're another eighty thousand dollars there, so city's contribution on this project to the way it stands right now is well over three hundred fifty thousand dollars. But with that said, I know, not specifically, but what it's gonna cost, the, the purchaser of, you know, property, put in private well and septic system with facility at that value, so it's a lot of, lot of money, so any, anything that could be recovered through state or federal deed dollars that could possibly offset that, that obviously, I think would be another cost of the benefit. Yeah, with that said, I'm totally in charge, or totally, totally in favor, this is, let's keep this thing open. Okay. Yeah, yes. Alright. We'll then go, we'll turn a motion to close the public hearing and open the regular meeting.
I'll make a motion, Jeff.
Excuse me, I have a motion by Councilman Reed, and second by Councilman Ling, to approve the public hearing and open the regular meeting. Home affairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? There's a question there, so then, but this does, this satisfies our portion of the public hearing, which the EDA had there some money, so now it transfers the next step back to EDA as far as highlighting the development agreement, give the transfer of property, we're dealt.
Correct. But ultimately, after that, the city policy that the EDA has, the, the council still has to give the ultimate approval of that same, so, or the transfer, so it'll be coming back to them.
Okay. And consent agenda, so consent agenda consists of I have a approval of bills, and B, approval of June the second, twenty twenty-five, city council meeting, city council meeting, N O C on sale, and some of the provisions for eight times average. Thank you. Uh, I would be approving of Joshua, Joshua Goble for a position, uh, full-time maintenance worker at, uh, twenty-six point four three E for our pending successful background. I would be approve, or approve hiring EMTs, uh, Macy Anderson and T A C Wagner for part-time EMT positions pending successful background. Uh, approve hiring of EMRs, Jennifer Mayran and Marisa Cullenberg for part-time EMR positions pending successful background. N O G, uh, approval of gambling permit for to be continued at the entertainment event set there on November twenty-first and twenty-second for a raffle. And I have a, uh, approval of gambling permit for Sibley's over grain boosters, uh, at the city county fair, July thirty to August seventh for a raffle. Motion to approve the petition. I'd like to motion to approve the settlement. Okay. Motion by Councilman Meyer, second by Councilman Lippin, to approve the consent agenda. Home affairs say aye? Sign out, please. I just wanted to make a comment. Go against, get them to judge for I O D, and it's not that I'm not in favor of hiring the public works employee, and it's pretty much as I stated at my last meeting, I know nothing about it, I know nothing about the needs, I have no idea how many candidates we already meet, I have no idea who this gentleman is, what qualification and price, so without having that information in front of me, I don't think that I can, I just wanted to say that. Okay. Like that, home affairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
That's the same one. Alright, I'm gonna do this, uh, script update.
Thank you, severe council. Uh, so just review the progress made in the past, uh, so all work at the intersection private five and Chandler Street was completed, a re-opened traffic, uh, last Tuesday, two of them have that, uh, work completed, superstitious placement is placed on Chandler seven nine and on Eighth Avenue. Um, so I'm sure folks are happy to get back to their homes along that stretch, and then throw the dry line, and just to better process for sure. Um, crews have been working on the ground utilities along Brooks Street, um, and then also on Sixth Avenue from Brooks to Alden, believe that Brooks utilities have completed, uh, today, we're starting to work up eight, uh, crews have been working on roadway grading on seven and fourteen Chandler, and then also on Brooks, uh, seven, with that Alden gravel now at the day as well. Um, thank you for progress planned for the next few weeks, continue roadway grading along Brooks and turning out Eighth Avenue, um, the intent is to get gravel all the way up through eight by the middle of next week to allow for curb to gutter next week, and then paving the week of twenty-first prior to the fair, that's the intention, if weather permits, um, if we're unable to get curb to gutter in next week, we'll probably just leave the gravel until after the fair, uh, don't wanna just have curb there as a tribute hazard, damage to the curb, uh, so that's the intention is there. Um, that the, complete the underground utilities, uh, on Sixth Avenue from Alden to Brooks, um, today they did remove pavement on Eighth Avenue, so we'll be working on utilities there, so we'll just have to complete that in the next couple of days, um, and then we'll be moving to seven and a half Avenue for the last stretch of utilities for this project, um, really by the end of the week, I think they'll be working there, probably finish that early next week to complete underground utilities on the project. Um, and then a lot of road grading after that, so we'll keep hoping for dry weather to, to keep things moving along. Um, and then that's the last update, uh, which is be seating on that stretch of Chandler that's currently planned for late July, kind of prep that to top soil, uh, to clarify to not seating. But, that's what I've got for, I guess, schedule update, um, there's any questions?
Certainly, is your seating gonna be the seat, or is it gonna be the mats?
It'll be with the blanket, yeah, the seat is blanket.
You might wanna push that off until after the fair, because there's a lot of people that walk along, and that could cause some trouble.
Trouble.
So you might wanna push that back if you can.
Yeah, certainly.
Paving that was done last year, will the finished course be done on that when they just finish course on this year?
So the intentions for the final, let's be called the wear course, anything that was paved last year, they put the wear course on this year, anything where we just put the bottom lip on this year, we'll wait till next year to do the wear course. Standard practice is to wait one winter, just in case you have settlement, allows you to make corrections without a permanent patch.
So you were saying, so you're thinking, if, if the weather cooperates, everything goes well, you'll, you'll have things paved by when?
Uh, the week of the twenty-first, probably middle, or for sure end of that week, if we can get curb in next week, the week of the fourteenth, we will get pavement the week of the twenty-first, which I can all depend on, you know, road being dry enough to get the gravel in, pretty much this week, maybe next, early next week till after that curb, and that, and that, that would be everything you're working on right now? Yeah, Brooks and eighth would be, I think, they would attend to pave, and then seventh would get paved as well.
And the hospital as well?
Yeah, so basically everything that opened up right now would get paved. Yeah, yeah, with the exception of Sixth Avenue from Brooks to Alden, that opened up right now, so all of that, I don't think they would have time to get that.
Yeah, well, Brooks, yeah, that's on the other side of Brooks.
Yeah.
But the main side.
Yeah, yeah, everything north of Brooks would, would be a tape.
Yeah, I, I, the whole, if weather cooperates here. Okay. Alright, any other questions from? Alright. Thank you. Thank you, and we'll move on to the, a request number eight, and that looks like that's a amount of one million one hundred twenty-six thousand eight hundred thirty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Would you approve that period? Would you approve the period request that presented? One second. Motion by Councilman Reed, second by Councilman Ling, to approve a request number eight. And if present, home affairs say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Yeah. Alright, M nine, resolution twenty-six dash twenty-two-five, this is a resolution acceptance donation of six dollars and five hundred eighty-seven dollars from the Arlington Fire Relief Facilitation to be used for the Arlington Fire Department for a battery and van. So I'm looking at this resolution.
Home groups, resolution twenty-six, twenty-two-five, resolution acceptance donation from the Arlington Fire Relief for the Arlington Fire Department van.
One second, one second. Alright, resolution twenty-six dash twenty-two-five, I think it was by Councilman Ling, second by Councilman Meyer, this is a, a resolution acceptance donation in two, uh, the, the councilman there agrees. Yes. Councilman Lippin?
Yes.
Councilman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Ling?
Yeah.
Or, uh, or approved, uh, one absence, one, uh, resolution. Alright, resolution twenty-seven dash twenty-two-five, resolution acceptance donation of fifty dollars from the Arlington Fire Relief to be used for their own ambulance.
Home groups, resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-two-five, so we're gonna, for the EDA, duration of fifty dollars.
I'm on six years. Second. I'll second. Alright, resolution twenty-seven dash twenty-five, this is by Councilman Lippin, second by Councilman Reeves, Reeves, this is a resolution acceptance donation in, uh, fifty dollars, uh, for the ambulance. Uh, with our, uh, Councilman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Lippin?
Yes.
Yes. Go through, one absence, the resolution. And then from the resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-two-five, resolution acceptance donation of, uh, two thousand seven hundred ninety-nine dollars from the Arlington Fire Relief Facilitation to be used for the Arlington Fire Department for, uh, the general.
Home groups, resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-two-five, uh, judgment obligation for the Arlington Fire Relief to the Arlington Fire Department, to the Arlington General.
One second. Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty-five, is the Councilman Reed, and second by Councilman Meyer, the resolution acceptance donation in, uh, the Arlington Fire Relief to be used by Jeff Rayler. Councilman Reeves?
Yes.
Councilman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Lippin?
Yes.
And Councilman Meyer?
Yes.
More favor, none against, and one asking, seven, motion passes. Alright. And eleven, uh, business hardship program.
Um, so we've had a request for the business here in town, um, to get some house with their fire facilities, and that's a conversation, a conversation kind of relevant to potentially support with permit fees after they've experienced, uh, fires, basically throughout their entire, their entire job. After that request, uh, my fellow with Ken, and with the EDA, we've had, the best way to handle that request is to put together a policy, um, required application, and certain theaters we met before, the city could potentially waive, we missed the whole fee, so I put together this draft, this book first draft, and then have him review it, um, so I'd like your guys' input, if this is something you'd like to explore, if there's any modifications, if it is something you'd like to move over with, um, just give feedback to me, guys.
Kind of the goal of this, which is to standardize, it's not subjective problem, so then, you know, and people don't come in and say, hey, you gave him a, you know, a reduction, but that's, so then we got this, the standard procedure that we need to follow back down.
And ultimately, even if it is, uh, business did apply, and you need requirements, it was still something, so we're gonna, so you guys can check final day, and there is implications in there about, you know, only during a certain period, it can be for a one-time purpose, it's not if you're misfinishing your business, if, for instance, a pack of gas or some emergency event, um, hopefully, help all their businesses stand down, so we don't have to worry about that.
So the, the way you explained it was, was perfect, with the, there's, that has a fire, and they got no building, and there's, and moved, and they still got license and deeds, and bills kind of, and, and, yeah, perfect example.
Especially when the city can legally justify, we've met our expenses, you know, sometimes our schedule is a cost for service, and we may make a little, when we're meeting our expenses, back to people, you know, like, we're really breaking even.
I know when you got it to the EDA, and we all looked at it, said, yeah, this is something we should really look at doing, I'm glad I came to the council, because I'm definitely favorable to the EDA for this, this company can easily move anywhere, and, I mean, it's, it's a pretty, pretty cut and dry program, so it's not something that I think could be abused real easy, perhaps, it'd be something that would be good for businesses and towns that happen to have this hardship, as you said.
Right. I like that you gotta show proof that you have that financial hardship, and you don't get, just anybody, you know?
Right.
So, uh, would you like to show proof tonight?
If you guys are comfortable with it, or if you read through it and you have any modifications, um, it's, it's not a rush by any means, I, I think the person or the, what's part of it, obviously. I think the person or the, what part of this, obviously, we're not gonna do today, but this has to be graduated. This is the first time, so, um, it's to your discretion. Do you feel ready to approve it, or you want to take a longer look?
I don't know, but you see, if you know of that, it seems pretty, you guys, you're hitting a lot of the stuff that needs to be hit, so. Is there anything from a legal standpoint that you can see in it?
I, I've reviewed it, and I, I think it's all good to go. I think it just needs your stamp of approval.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, City of Ireland Policy for fee waivers due to business hardship.
Hold second.
Motion by Councilman Meyer, second by Councilman Meyer, let them to approve the business hardship, uh, program. All fair say?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. All right, uh, K S B replacements, mixture estimate, Lee.
Good evening. Good evening. Well, the water plant, we got mixtures for anaerobic slumber tank, and one of them has failed. The moisture has got through into the mortars on it, seal must have went out entirely. It's been rebuilt once, it has a hundred and three thousand eighty-eight hours on it. So we got our money out of it, but it was moved back into the top of twelve. Um, it's a flight, seems like flight, this one's lasting the longest, I've ever seen a lot of fail on twenty-five, twenty-six thousand hours. We got a hundred and three, so we got fifty dollars an hour on each rebuild. Um, K S B is a lot better quality than, if it lasts longer. We, we switched one of them last year, because we're having the same issue with that, and every year I have to replace a mixture that we have on rebuild. So we decided we're mixing with these different quality mixtures. So, um, I do have one that we ain't using, I'm gonna put it in there because it's, I need it. It's an eleven to thirteen week lead, I'm honest, because nothing's made in the U.S. Flight's made in either Norway or Sweden, and K S B is made in Germany. So that's why, that's what the prices are up to, the tariffs and stuff now. So, and I think the other one's got just as many hours, been rebuilt once. Let her run until it goes, or we put that other one back in there and put one in for next year for the budget. You know, we're replacing, it is gonna do it all, so.
No, K S B is a good piece of equipment, but you think it's worth just to stay competitive, just to get a, um, electric pumping? You think it's the flight representative, just to get a impression from them as far as rebuilding and new, just as a comparison?
For rebuilding, they looked at, they have it on their shop, and they said it's in poor shape to rebuild, so they won't even, electric pump won't even rebuild it. Right, their quality folks got it.
Quality.
They, they said it's in poor shape, so, but that's what they're telling you. It can be rebuilt, but I don't know what you're gonna get out of it, you know, for life.
I just thought when we're spending thirteen thousand, thirteen thousand dollars to have a secondary comparison.
You know, in the past, I'd say ten years, the prices have doubled on this stuff in town. Creeps, just creeps.
You're saying, that there's another company to get, like, an apple to apples for the new?
Yeah, we, electric, well, in, in.
Electric pump sells flight mixtures, so it's a foot, I'll explain, right, there's.
Quality folks, those K S Bs. Just like one of the Ford dealer, one's a Chevrolet dealer. And some people would say that K S B is superior, and some people would say this place, this area, this place has been around for fifty-some years. K S B has been, uh, clearly much better. We're spending thirteen thousand, but comparison, although we have the price on the table, is probably really not, you know, ethically, ethically correct. Going at price for that, but. It was just a suggestion, because, yeah, we needed to get those kind, those kind of hours on it.
Yeah, yeah, this aren't any anaerobic slumber tank, and that's where the biological products were removed. That's the first part of that process.
I just want to make sure that vendors don't get an opinion from hospitals and people service.
Right.
Oh, I understand.
That we play favor to a specific vendor. That places will start going, they'll take advantage of that. I know that.
You know, they have that, sir. You want to improve it, we need to improve the power. I'll, I'll make a motion that we approved, though, if everybody else ends up trying to do K S B, basic for quality flow for twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy hours, too. Yes, okay. Motion by Councilman Reed, second by Councilman Meyer, on Lynn, so who's, uh, touches up the mixture, uh, the water's A.I.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
In order to add to this work project, I just want to make the all known that we've seen a great difference in these water plant. Was full completed up plan, just been breached and restored. That's really interesting. So a month ago, we had that three-some inches of rain, and Kurt will know what I'm talking about, three had a complaint, called three pumps, steam hard. Remember when that well comes way up, the left well on the big, it was about an hour that three pumps kicked off. And I'd able to put construction to get it tested. And then, and then I talked to him after that, he was up on the north end of the hospital, running the sewer line up there, almost to the park. And I said, so you're here and all this rain happening?
Yeah, yeah, how was it? He said, everything was wrong, it was a grass damage, we got flooded, yeah, it came through the water, it came out, it was reprieved up, all piercing plant. So there's some, had to be something on cross connection, or something down the channel that was getting a lot of that storm. This one, we, 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 we.
Well, that was part of it, according to the other project, too, by an empty battery, too, a bit.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because now, but even when we had entry, the, the, the rain, you know, the, the tool, the station, the boat pumps would be coming on and, and they, they just had, they've been on, rotating. We never had boat pumps, never had a high level on, so, we're seeing something, that's it. Just wanted to share that. I think it's funny, well, but.
Yeah, we can find that, I'll update that.
Good, thanks. All right. Nine thirteen, that's on our, period.
Right. Yeah, I don't know if you guys have a chance to look at that memo, uh, put together, just to kind of create a picture of the struggles we've had up here with H back, mixture in particular. Uh, you can get it already approved, the kitchen A.C., uh, speed replacement, uh, there's a thousand one hundred fifty sprinkler move before they get that air handler unit to Janos closet. The, the equipment did come in last week, uh, so once we get that sprinkler move, it's hopefully tomorrow, they're supposed to be here. There's no extra cost there, just in there. So that, but that, that should be done soon, too. Uh, then in early June, one of our big vertical A.C. units gone out, we have four total. We have three each on the pool, all these big ones right now, so. Um, A E M was our call when it first broke, and they provided a tool for it, we had to fix it. So I went out with other folks, G S M, who had, uh, worked in the kitchen. They pretty much said, we're not gonna find parts, um, so all the days when I'm trying to fix it. Send me two thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars to replace one of the tubes. Anyway, uh, before I did this memo, I started to pull A E M, really talking to, because I talked to another company, said, they're not the math. They wouldn't even try to fix it either since it's that old. Uh, so probably, uh, I hear back today, they're confident that they have the parts to be to fix it for this purpose. Uh, however, we are, you know, we're a unit, but it should be done, um. Uh, and then just the last item that I had included was walking cooler, U L S, uh, that went down, too. However, Miller's wasn't able to fix that motor, uh, put it at the end of the day, Friday, and that's working again. Uh, but that's another item that's really expensive to replace, and that's going down, uh, outdated. Anyway, the, the scope of this memo is pretty much just, you get a lot of hearing, you know, a lot of expense problems with H back. I'm working with G S M, I'm just getting pricing, uh, on boilers and everything we have, I think we're just giving a nightmare. Uh, how that all flushes out, someday I don't, I don't pull that forward.
So you have three air handler units available for this building. Um, it's risky, because any one of them could go down.
Right.
But it's a stretch on a ninety-five degree day if we gotta rent one, for those three units to maintain, probably is a stretch. We haven't heard anything yet, uh, complaints yet about that, but.
Oh, we have had complaints, the last canteen era.
Okay.
Yeah, they said that it was really hot, canteen era. We've been trying to keep the door shut, like, turn and everything to kind of, like, ease the burden, but if commercial units, I think we're finding their average lives is ten, fifteen years, and we're at twenty-five.
Yeah.
And it's really long.
Really stretched out. The first issue is that there's a, I know we've had one.
Yes. I think all of these pieces of equipment are reaching end of life. And we're just coming to you guys, we're starting to have, and we need to start thinking about what the next couple of years is gonna look like. And even if, you know, we spend sixty-five hundred to fix this unit, to purchase maybe another year or two, that, even if we do that, one of these other ones is gonna fail at any time, or that, who knows how long that fix is gonna last, so.
And I think a minimum is, is, wouldn't have failed now even after it's temporarily fixed. Whether it's twelve months or eighteen months, we should be prepared to change.
Place them all. If you're gonna do one, do them all.
Well, and with that said, I did ask Lynn to put together a report on our rentals, that is later on in the agenda, but if you guys want it. I just wanted you guys to see the, the use and rate, how many rentals, what we're getting for revenue, when you're looking at these costs. They're, you know, fully conform with decisions. And if there's more information you want us to see in those reports, we're gonna start getting them to you monthly, um, to help as these bigger decisions start coming.
And actually with this place, it's not just the H back and all this other stuff. You're looking at this place needs to rental like you wouldn't believe. Doors cracked, the kitchen, the kitchen, the, the cabinets are on heart. This whole, this whole place either needs to rental, or there's, we gotta look at options of what's gonna happen, because, you know, twenty-five years, and it's starting to, it's showing its age. So it's not just, you know, we can put H back in, but there's other, other underlying issues in this place that need to be fixed as well.
Yeah, we have some, we have pride in the, um, on the tacos, and makes me a little nervous, and we got a lot of people here with alcohol, and I'm trying to have them for this, but, yeah, so.
I do want to ask, do we, are we able to, are, are they able to approve the fix right now? I couldn't get, like I said, G S M and then Coney Comfort was the other place to reach out, they couldn't pull it for fixing that.
I think that's the direction you guys want to go.
We should move it, fix it.
Yeah.
Should I do? So, I'd like to make a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, E D A M, I should fix the A C A C system.
Yeah, there's second.
Hold second.
Motion by Councilman Lynn, second by Councilman Liffen, uh, fix the A C system, all fair say?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. All right. Okay. The other, uh, the update of the donation policy, we just approved it, it's a change that's never made.
Yeah, I just think it's a language, outlining what all of our other, let's clear any policies. Um, I know last weekend, you're gonna bring it back, fully written, so you have to approve it.
I got, I got a question, and it's not so much the policy, it's just my question. So if, if somebody on the leave to a point where their, their needs are drawn to this, um, are they still on city health insurance, the city P R contribution?
Um, yes, because this would be still in their kid law section, would still be, you know, that hour for hour would still be used as tax.
As long as there's money in this account, and they're drawing off in this account for lack of insurance, there's still, it's gonna be P R contribution and health insurance.
Yeah, exactly, as it's the person donating it, we're taking it, yeah, we should.
Any comments, questions? The only other comment I have, and, and not to make all kinds of work, but when you do have it, since we're a staff member, it's active within this, and there's donations, and there's draw. It'd be nice if we could get, for me, if you get a simple one-page report that shows that the activity will be called on a hundred cases.
Maybe, maybe do that without names.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Really, it's just financial documents, not a.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah. Make a motion to approve the A time off, P T O, E S S P, cop, sick, talk, leave, donation policy. Hold second. Motion by Councilman Meyer, second by, by Councilman Reese, uh, approved the updated, uh, leave finish possible, fair say?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. All right, complication.
Okay, so complications, you know, being issued at the last year, we did get our first review back from the attorneys, like, right, as I was leaving, sometimes we're turning to you. Uh, so right now, since I determined that everyone's kind of doing their first week of their, um, first edited draft. We have a meeting here on the seventeenth for all of us to get together and just kind of talk through what's been sitting in there, um, their edits. I told them I'd have an update after that meeting. What I'd like to do is, um, we can say our first week in our budget for sessions, kind of piggyback that on it. If you guys are already here, you're in first session, some budgets, um, piggyback the complications discussion. During those first sessions, I think we definitely want, but I think if this one is a little early, we're still reading through a lot of such things. And then, and then more revenue, so that's, you know.
Yeah, you could start shooting it my way, um, I know I've been working with another state. Better work with, for, for.
It's a lot, and, and, so I've asked them to make me, like, this memo, and you can write your number, and so everybody's making their comments, I'm like, looking at this. Planning and filming, and I'm sure a lot of those planning and filming, those, so, the work in progress is, is a lot we're going through. So we continue to write updates, and I just thought if we're gonna start doing other work, we need to get some back, that.
All right. Item sixteen, uh, P F A S, contract agreement.
It's also a local thing, I think, I've moved, worked on, and it's gone, we give five for the grant for the T P A, and we were awarded forty-seven thousand dollars. Um, part of this is to have people service facilitate, doing the testing, reporting, doing this education, basically executing the project that we're probably doing. I thought of the award. So their fees are included, so, but regardless, they included that in their, yeah, they included that in the grant application. Well, their relationship is not possible, so you should be all covered under our bill. And for us, I don't, I don't think this is an issue yet, but we're trying to get ahead of the game. I know that they're bringing some regulations on our file knowledge that are implemented and now that's such a first, so we'll all, we're all better, because we can grab some of the field.
Any questions? Third, beer draft, fourth, mine, that, city, hotel draft. I'm gonna have to have that, yeah.
Before we finish.
All right. Item seventeen, anything else up here?
You guys are wonderful, we find out what's going to be best.
I'll make a motion to authorize the city agreement, uh, agreement with people service in regards to E pass sampling and monitoring. Hold second. Okay. Motion by Councilman Reed, second by Councilman Meyer, to approve the agreement for the, um, E pass, uh, Council, Councilman, all fair say?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. All right. Item seventeen, change these markets.
Oh, gee. Good evening.
Football, watching game, bro.
Yeah.
I noticed that we're not on, uh, the.
We're already recorded on that.
We are, okay.
It's just left, come, come in, it doesn't do the, anything, and.
Thank you.
We're not live anymore, that's the one draw that I heard.
You have, okay.
If you guys wanna go back to the owl, I can certainly start using it again. Do you have a discussion on the miss? Yeah.
Yeah, I, I... Well, well, I, okay, ten-four, I, just, my grandson's gonna be up.
No, that's perfect.
I didn't even lift.
So, tonight's ambulance, information, I'm all business, you call fine. So, I'm gonna pass this down, unfortunately, my apologies, I did not get the civilty county fair board contract within the allotted timeframe of our council agenda. And I just, well, if you guys take a look at that, I can point out a couple things for you. Um, historically, we have been requested to do certain EMS standbys, by the civilty county board for certain events, and, um, just kinda tidy up some loose ends, and, um, have the appropriate agreement. Uh, this is one that has been three years prior to the attorney, and would like to present those to the civilty county board for their tractor pull and also the demolition derby, it's listed in section one. We do cover specific information in there where they would have a dedicated ambulance along with, uh, two attendees to essentially provide treatment on site if they should have to be transported off the ground. We would ultimately request them to dispatch our, our primary truck out to go get them. And if it was in serious nature, and we didn't have a truck available, we'd be able to transport them only under serious issues. Again, my apologies for sending that to you in front of you now, um, but I figured I was trying to make it to the agenda, and I failed, so...
For onsite contract standby or minor, um, medical assistance, and then if somebody has to be transferred, then it actually goes on to the person being transported's insurance.
That is correct, you know, they would be built specifically, the extra fair board would not be built without patient-specific, you for certain, to transport. I welcome any questions. It's very similar to the agreements that we've used this month, please. It's just a little bit more formal, especially with, uh, the liability causes in section nine added to it as well. If you are, okay, with approving this contract, I welcome that, if not, I understand that, I respect that.
And I did review it, and I don't think it...
Okay.
So, you need an update?
Motion to approve it.
I'll make a motion to approve the ambulance service and civilty county fair board agreement.
Yeah, just a second. One second. Uh, motion, council member list, and second, council member Ling to approve the contract for ambulance service with the civilty county fair board. Just one question, so this is separate from the race?
That's correct.
That's a different customer, the customer, yeah. All clear, say it. All right. Both. Motion passed.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
And then before Mark dives into this, I'm just gonna try to give you an update. Um, there have been a lot of legislative changes this year regarding EMS and funding, and, um, I attended a webinar last week from the Office of EMS, and I gave more information as to these legislative changes, and so, I did give you a brief synopsis of what occurred. Um, but I will also send out, um, a message that you guys can watch that webinar itself to kinda get more information. I do have a meeting that, with Jessica, and kinda discuss those, because some of these grant opportunities, we will be able to go through. Um, so, the first one was an education reimbursement program. There is a rule on compensated peer pool. Um, then they also kind of, um, built earned learning programs, education assistance program, they've built it up. We actually financed a lot, a lot more million dollars. And, um, also an ambulance operating deficit grant program. So, we are talking an excess of anywhere between two to eight point six million dollars that they are setting aside for EMS agencies in the next three, six years.
Yep.
So, there's some huge funding available, and I'm excited to see these things transpired, 'cause it will help support some of these.
It's key to all the rural, yes.
Yes, yes. There's, there's, I think it's including criteria in some of these grant opportunities for federal, um, agencies, 'cause there's these numbers, uh, rule, and so quickly, it's terrible. But, the changes, it'll help, um, it's definitely not an end-all, but, um, if they're able to prioritize good grant money, it'll help really good.
How like, yeah. You can't open up the, you can't even look, and it's like, wow, based on what they're telling us, and what you might, it's gonna be really nice, man.
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll send out that, the link, please, to watch the webinar, it is a lot of valuable information, and it's gone an hour and a half long, just to warn you, but it's, it's a lot of information in there, so I will send it out to the, okay, to the public. Okay, it's a bunch of...
Um, so, to start with, uh, most people may not be helping, started before, a lot of you guys came before, but we started what we call the mentorship program down there, that's your ambulance service, about four years ago. Tonight, we're here just to kinda share some of the successes of the partnership, and what some of those resources and labor, we're all about. And Jamie and I wanted to mention first, before we get started, uh, a thank you to everyone here, I'm gratitude. Um, you gave us the time, you were patient when we asked. You allowed us to send it, it's, it's... You gave us the patience when we were down on our block, you gave us the time to try. All these things that they have, they know, we're proud of, and it's really much easier to help. We run the service, it's a big problem, too, so let's go ahead and give a mention. The mentorship program that we started, with a few hires come along, we appointed them a member of our service that has a lot of experience, time, and they, they kinda take them on with their arm, in their arm, they kinda show them around, when they're, we have quite an extensive F T O process here that we do, but that people try to lose, like, when that person get ready to be on their own, Jamie's spirit, and all of this, adds to it. And so, as that person progresses along, then they're introduced to that mentor, and the mentors out on the road. And they kinda grow from there, this builds a lot of team focus, it builds a lot of team mentality together, you kinda work through these problems together, and you learn to solve them, tell them, you know, so many things that I can't go into. Some of the good things that have come out of this, that folks have recognized, is right now, on this team, on Jamie's team, she has ten E M Ts. Ten, that's almost not heard of, to an ambulance our size, to a city our size, to a P S A our size, you have to look hard, if you find one. Uh, but, to make that point, and to, I thanks to you for, like, you allow us to do this. Of those ten E M Ts on your crew right now, they have an average tenureship with your ambulance service of a re-year. That I can assure you, not present, that you will not find, uh, to an ambulance your size, to a service of some. I'm just gonna stop there, thank you for everything, but I think that you're not crying, that you're...
It's not something...
Well, it is, it's a team effort, that speaks of every member of that ambulance service, that speaks to every member on the speaking, like, we've got people this morning, have a lot of these things that been happening, several, a lot of things. And I wanna say this, this is why that they kinda love to talk, that we really do need it, anytime we're out there, we stop, and I'm pleased, you know, uh, tell them Jamie and Mark told you to stop, and...
Yeah.
You know, uh, we tell your E M Ts, Jake handles the paramedic, you know, these are, these are your employees. Uh, they're pretty proud you're here, I hope you're proud of the captain. Uh, tap on by and see your base, and check out your location. Now, you should probably follow, we should, we may be on call, so that, well, Jamie's been around right now.
Yeah.
So, I'm sorry, but I just went with it, but also, I had none of that, to speak for the same thing as the tenureship we were paramedics, we even have doctors. Uh, we maintain, and we're very proud of this, we might have said we reported one, two, but we maintain some, that we've talked about in the statement, so, we've been proud of that, we've spent over a year on it. Uh, that is maintaining the state's strategy. How do we do that? You allow us to have the money, you allow us to give us time to grow, you allow us time to establish. Some of those, those, yes, those apps, that come back, those talks, I'm sure. Um, I think I covered, uh, those hall things, okay? And then, our, our night out, I wanted to also go in there and say that we'll be present down in the hotel. Uh, this year, we're gonna set up a table, we should have a couple more people come on here, that'll lead your eat, like, do some blood pressures, like, whatever that people might wanna have, or questions that they wanna ask. Jamie is a very big believer on maintaining public staff, so, I think we're... Uh, and I think, did I just say anything?
I have a status on the draw.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Right.
I know, they told us today, and I'm not gonna hold my grudge, but I'm gonna remain hopeful, um, completion date is October second. So, this is, this is a good thing.
Twenty-twenty-six.
And so, this year, and then last week, um, Mark was here for our state expression.
Right, this is so huge.
Yep, uh, Office of EMS came by, and inspected our ready, went through all our paperwork, our licensure, documentation, everything, inside and out, and up and down, and we were supposed to have some flying colors.
Yeah, 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 well, he raised an inspection, you say.
Yep.
There we were. And she opens up the door and looks inside, she checks underneath the mat, makes sure we're all... She makes sure there's no expires, she...
Yep. Yeah. And then, um, also through this update on hometown billing, it's nice that, uh, we're actually starting to see someone come in in a timely manner, now that we've switched our billing company. Um, and we're just gonna keep watching that, and hopefully, things will be going well with that. And then, also, as of today, two-hundred-and-fifty-nine calls for service.
Way over five hundred, and that's what I'll say, so...
So, whether or not, so, I'm here, and you just wanna share some interesting things about your ambulance service.
Thank you.
Thank you, you're welcome.
I definitely wanna commend you to Jamie and Mark, 'cause when I first got on the council, on my first meetings, because I had the ambulance back, and one, a meeting with Ridgeview to discuss the future of the ambulance, and that was, you know, we were either going the Ridgeview way, or the way we're at right now, and Jamie was brought on with a tough, tough job of saving our ambulance, and she's done a very good job of that.
Perfect, we know, guys, it's four decades, right? I mean, that's something really, so I imagine we can be retired, you know, ten years. Yeah, and I, I'll be retired in five years, you want thirteen days to wake up? I mean, you need to drop that date, I'll probably be in the gallery, so, you know, five, there.
And, and, and the math, uh, remarks there, a lot of it, it's, right, you guys are the ones in charge, and you guys are service workers, you know, I'm, I'm there to manage and help and support and educate, um, but, you know, they're the driving force.
Thank you. Are there any other ambulance services in the state that are doing what we're doing? I mean, there are, there are interior ambulance services, but not, you know, a state model, but you guys...
I'm kidding, they'll all learn that.
Well, but...
You gotta do that, that's your secret.
Um, there's, there's a handful in the South Central regions, and I know of that are doing the state on call kinda structure, but it seems like everybody kinda does a little bit on their own. Um, it's, it's kinda like what fits for their service, you know, and, and what kinda culture they currently have, employed with their service, if it's a hundred percent volunteer, if they are municipality-owned, if they are by one thirty-three, there's, there is such a huge variation, uh, differences in the South Central regions. But there is, there is something, I have to pick up and really inquire about the state on call, I know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna go play a little bit, I appreciate it. Great.
Well, I don't know if I have much more to add tonight, uh, a lot of the social deals we've been working on, um... I guess, uh, I guess the one question I, I did wanna ask, have we had any updates from the different...
Well, I did reach out after last week, I was up to see if Jamie was gonna be here, but just for a moment, um, and he emailed me today, like, really late today, especially, I still get on, and I left, I was on for August. So, I'm hoping he'll come for the August meeting. Yeah.
Is that all I got?
Yeah. We administer this.
Bear with me, I have something, um, on the owl, that broke while I was working, I think I have a fix, so if you guys want the owl back, I can start doing this, we can try it.
And I mean, I've complained, I can't hear it.
Okay, so I'll try it for next meeting, hopefully it's fixed, and I'll be calling back if it doesn't work. Okay, and then, so, we're talking about ambulance, I was contacted, I've been, you know, I think contacted, so we do have a meeting, you know, a couple of things, just a question, are you gonna call us? We have your, which is important, um, so I'll let you guys know, but both are in the, so...
Yo.
Okay, all right.
No, he just, he just called me, because he wasn't here, he was, put it back to...
Okay, well, I'm here on that, for, for... I'll just keep it back, you know, wait, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, he's the CEO of the... And he, he just said, special about that, I think they opened up a call, so he just wanted to see if you're ready to be working, and we're, we advanced.
Yeah, okay, so, I'll hear, I'll, we'll, you guys. Um, some good things that are happening, our electric study is underway, you guys approached that last year, we're doing great, right on leave, so, we're working with T S T on getting, um, ten years worth of utility bills, we're talking about like the outage we had on Friday, we're recording everything, communicating with them. I told them that our first priority is making our system safe, our second priority is making it reliable. After that, we're gonna talk about where the city is gonna be in five years, making sure we're replacing the equipment, incorporating that, that city on land that we talked about. Well, as in much of that study, I'll, I'll let you guys update it. Um, also, our A D I agreement was signed by Green Isle, so that is now fully executed. We settled our first bill here in June off of the lift station, and I actually was surprised, it was fifty percent four, that we're charging awful for the individual meter, so we are gonna make up what has been lost so many years, um, and hopefully get those funds, so... Really happy that we just finished that up and get it out. Um, like I said earlier, working on budget, we're doing our internal review, our audits should be ready for the August meeting, we'll have them do their presentation, and then, I'd like to schedule some more sessions for you guys, we'll maybe have a date, some one other, different meeting, um, so, we're gonna come together, work on the budget. After twenty-three. And then, they are plugged Arlington night, night out, uh, like, August fifth, being, you guys, you're in the tent. If you wanna, okay, if you wanna volunteer, let Jamie, or Glenn, or Nick, you can move those, you know, to... I can let, I can, we'll see, so, I'll, I'll, for talking about, feel like something different, like, under us again?
Okay. Any questions? Yeah, thank you. Um, June Police Department report, that was in a packet, it was like, that. We have the people service report, it was in a packet, and he votes in a report, any questions?
Yeah, if there is, if there's information you guys think will be valuable, we're gonna continue to build on that report, kind of our first step at it.
Just, just off the cuff, I got a question for yourself, but overall, has the usages dropped? Because I know that the wedding, wedding venues are changing, and that's not its fault. We knew when we built this building, I think our projected budget, when we built this building out, we're gonna lose seventy thousand here, just wondering if you wanna add new structures, or do we don't add new structures? Any questions on that? Okay, and then, uh, stay in those phones and, and budgets, any questions on that? All right. Um, just, we need to, uh, see close, closure requests.
Well, the chambers, the youth request was afternoon, I, we, there, I, I... Uh, the chambers in Arlington, Arlington Health are doing annual cookout for families. It would be from one to four P M, um, and they're looking at two dates, that's why she wanted to get it approved, so they could decide whether it's August twenty-fourth or September fourteenth. And I did send this to Glenn, just to get his blessing on it for safety purposes, I think he was already gone, I got this so late in the day, but if you guys are comfortable with it, you could just... But if you guys are comfortable with it, you could just approve it with the copy of this one, if any issues, we'll address that. The map is in there, I think it's just one block by Arlington.
Are these days like, the weekend days?
I think they were, um, maybe?
Yeah.
Kind of a weekday? So, August, or the other, both Sundays, so, yeah. So, school won't be.
I'd like to motion to approve the. Closing, uh, the second avenue northwest from Main Street to Olive, where the events requested.
Also, again, it's, if one has, one.
Yeah, right, yeah. All right, motion by councilmember, needs, second by councilmember Liff to approve the street with close request, uh, per Glenn's approval. All fair say aye?
Aye.
Both? Motion passes. You know, it's just a few dates, um, July seventeen, planning on zoning, July twenty-first, E V A, and then August four, the year next month, six thirty.
From Arlington, right off, five thirty? Yeah, five thirty, and that'll be at four fifteen. Did you guys, I, did you guys do that, uh, training that I sent you free? All right, if you guys are able to attend that, it'll all R S P for us.
I'll get a word. And, uh, I have one thing I'd like to say, when we had that power outage July, you know, this, this weekend, and I understand it was very trying, it's hot, it's, you know? Um, I would like, just a, a kind of a, a statement to the public that, yes, we do have the, the, the call in line that call in when there's an issue, but it'd be nice to, you know, talk to your neighbors too, make sure they've called in, Kirby, feel like, what, forty-eight calls in ten minutes?
Ninety-four calls in three hours.
Yeah, and a lot, some of them were ruined, and some of them were calling, when is it gonna be done? When, you know, it's hard for him to do his job if he's answering that phone, you know? Say, you know, just remind people, look at Facebook, if we say we know, please don't call, ask what's gonna be done. That's just kind of my, just a, I think the heat off of Kirby, because he did get yelled at a couple times, but, you know, we understand it's frustrating, it's hot, and I guess.
So, follow that, we don't have multiple lines either, so when our lines get logged down on the phone, we can't even call in the cloud to get them responding. So, I think that's very community, talking to your neighbors.
Yeah, that's kind of, spread the word, you know, the, it was like, this was a major one, we, you know? Yeah, because it was very difficult for them, and even, I think there was only on Facebook so that they could, people said the line was down. Well, yeah, when you got that many calls, half the town is calling, it's not gonna be working, so, just kind of help the service, you know? Give our employees a chance to get it done.
Yeah, I think what they gotta do is they gotta look out, they gotta look at their neighbor's house to start, that's what I do in my block. And then you talk to one of your neighbors, already called it, you know, that block is satisfied, you don't have.
Yeah, you don't have fifteen people, tell everybody on block calling, it's, yeah, exactly, he's trying to get a call, ultimate call, incoming call, incoming call, it's just gonna take longer. All right, now, I want to, can I motion to adjourn?
I want to motion to adjourn.
Just like a, motion by councilman Liff, second by councilman Meyer, adjourn meeting on Thursday. All right, aye? Both? Maybe it's adjourned at seven forty-four.